Mr. DeAndrea, roll call please, yes or no?
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Rosinski.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. McEnon.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Sinek.
Yes, we are back in public. Take notice, this public meeting of the Servile Board of Education was emailed to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger in accordance with chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Further in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 of 21, a copy of this notice is posted outside the secretary's office, and a copy was also filed with the clerk of the Borough of Servile. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeAndrea, if you could provide a summary of what we discussed in executive?
Personnel matters included but not limited to agenda items, negotiations, Local 469 contract, principals' contract, and the board attorney contract.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have three different presentations for both the board and the public. Dr. Labby, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the three individuals who are presenting.
We're very fortunate tonight. We have three very special presentations. As you know, during our last meeting, we talked a little bit about Vision 2030 and some of the steps that we'll be taking in that direction. The presentations you're going to see tonight speak to that. First of all, I had the opportunity to witness an incredible presentation by some outstanding educators. They are Meet Your Mentor Day, as well as our New Teacher Orientation Day. Outstanding, as they addressed our new staff and gave them the opportunity to learn what makes Servile so magical. Also, I had the opportunity to witness the incredible accomplishments of our technology department as we went about trying to get more and more parents to create accounts and sign up for our Parent Portal, which is a huge step for this district in terms of utilizing the technology that we have to enhance the efficiency of this operation, as well as to promote student learning. And then finally, some incredible educators over the summer got together and wrote a curriculum, our Writer's Workshop curriculum, which, as we talked about, is one of the steps that we're going to take in this district to assist our students in meeting the Common Core State Standards in Language Arts Literacy. So we have three great presentations. Without any further delay, I'd like to introduce you Shannon Johnson.
Good evening, members of the board, central office administrators, community members, and fellow colleagues. I'm Shannon Johnson. I'm the district mentor coordinator, as well as the middle school coordinator. This is Dara Alvin. She's the coordinator at the UES and the elementary schools. I'm very excited to be here, and it is with great pleasure, and I thank you for the invite to present our mentor program. The mentor program formally started in Servile well before 1998. However, the state created guidelines for mentoring for school districts in 1998. That was actually the first year of teaching in Servile for me, so I was the pilot program. Melissa Inesca couldn't be here with us tonight, but she is the coordinator at the high school. Some of our program goals specifically for New Teacher Orientation include acclimating our new teachers to the community and to the culture. The new teachers actually take a bus tour of the town, and, you know, we point out areas of interest. They do see the schools, the Borough Hall, and Yas Bon Jovi's house is included on the tour, which they're all delighted to see, so we do, you know, show the fame. We also train our new teachers on such things as Power School. Dr. Zeigner did a presentation for us on Danielson, so they are aware of the district expectations and specific tools that we're using for effective teaching strategies. They then have time on the computers, they have hands-on time to try the Power School, they get onto the Lesson Plan Portal, and again, it's important that we support our new teachers. So those first days in school, today, tomorrow, and the first week, they're already jumping ahead, and they know where they have to go to post certain things and where to get different information. This is the first year that we actually invited our standard-certificated staff back for Meet Your Mentor Day. Traditionally, it's been a provisional teacher program where teachers are, for a year, being mentored and then earning their standard certificate. However, Dr. Aguilas does a really nice job on classroom management and classroom procedures. According to Harry Wong, it's what we know as the first days of school. So I thought, what better way for them to, you know, get going on their classroom management plans, but to join us for the second day, and some did. The more important part is for those being mentored, they get to meet their mentor, they start building their relationship right away in those first seconds of the greeting. Barbara DeSantis did a nice job on technology for us, and we talked a lot about, and again, got on the computers for hands-on, a lot of the subscriptions that the district pays for, so that, again, we could be effective teachers and use tools to help student achievement. And then further, you know, they take a little building treasures tour, and they have a special log that they fill out for the first day. They have school visitations, and that is all done with the mentor and the novice teacher, so everything is grade-specific, as well as school-specific. Our goals throughout the year, don't just stop at that two-day program. Dara, Melissa, and I are the immediate contacts for our mentors. We act as the liaisons between the administration, I, the liaison with central office. We do monthly new teacher forums covering effective teaching topics, which a lot of those roundtables and presentations are done by our district administrators. The mentors must apply and complete a training in order to be mentors for the year. They are required to meet with their novice teachers, and they complete logs documenting the time and the topics that they covered. As coordinators, we oversee the mentoring process at the building levels. We file documentation, we write the district mentor plan, and we coordinate the mentor training. This year, we were very pleased to have a little teacher resource center over the two-day orientation period. The Servile Education Association, as well as the NJEA, had materials, so we had a little cart. Some of our financial representatives, such as AXA and Valick, donated books, so we actually had a giveaway for the teachers, and we gave away 10 copies of very resourceful texts that will kind of get them going for their first year. We're in the process of ordering the Classroom Management book, which, again, is Harry Wong, who is the guru on effective teaching strategies, to, again, guide teachers, and that will be compliments of the district. On the servilek12.net, last year, one of our new additions to the program was a special New Teacher Link. We put the logs there for the mentors to find. We post webinars and different, again, useful tools to support our new teachers throughout their first year. We also this year made a QR code, so on the two orientation days, we asked teachers to scan the QR code, which then linked them right to our New Teacher Link. A decade of change. This is my 13th year with the mentor program. I joined when Claire Goschinsky was the district coordinator, and over the course of the years, as education changes and things upgrade, we also have upgraded our program. So we've updated our log process, we have the new teacher link with the QR code. This past summer, we tried an online mentor training, as opposed to a one-and-a-half-hour training that we held after school on a Thursday in May, and mentors really appreciated that much more. They would be placed on an eligible list, and then if selected to mentor, they would be trained. This process will also assist the coordinators in the mentor program throughout the year. As new teachers join us for replacements or for mid-year mentoring, they can simply just click on the training as needed and complete the training. We've updated our program evaluation survey, which is now on Google Live Forms. Our orientation invite process was all online. The RSVP nature allowed the new teachers attending to not only tell us who they were, but the certification, what school they were teaching in, and some important information, again, for us to coordinate the two orientation days. Finally, what I would like to try to do this year is have some supplemental forums to accommodate all non-tenure staff. According to, again, the new state guidelines coming down the pike, we need to support all of our new staff. So all non-tenure, we have a school law forum, we will have a follow-up on Danielson evaluation, and sort of meet the needs of all non-tenure staff. This is a compilation of our two-day orientation. The change in Meet Your Mentor Day this year was specific to, again, a classroom management plan, and when we talk about classroom management, we mean the procedures and the consistency that many of our students coming to us on a daily basis need, turning chaos to student achievement. So that is, I think, our underlying goal within the program. And as Dr. Labby said, our theme this year was magic, because I grew up here, as some of you may know, and I do truly find it magical to teach here. So I asked all of the administrators to tell our new teachers what was so magical about their department or their building, so it was really a nice introduction for our new staff coming in. So I, again, appreciate the invite, and I'm glad to show what we work so hard at. Thank you.
You know, one of the things that she failed to note, though, was what makes Servile so magical is people like Shannon, Dara, and Melissa. They're amazing. To witness what they were doing with our teachers, and I've been in several districts, it's unmatched. You guys are truly superb professionals, and we can't thank you enough for all that you did. Board, Board of Education members, do you have any questions for Shannon?
Board members with questions, comments?
Good job.
I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the board for the presentation, but also, as Dr. Labby said, for the work that you do in putting this together. You know, when a new teacher is coming in for the first time, you know, it's a time of great excitement in their lives, and it's also a time of great fear and trepidation, because once they're in front of that class, it's them and they're in front of that class. And this makes it just a little bit easier. It helps get that first week or two off to a solid start, and if you get that first week or two off to a solid start, there's a much better shot that the rest of the year is going to be equally as successful. I'd also like to thank the Servile Education Association for the donation of the materials and the resources for use in this program as well. Thank you.
And also do breakfast. I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, the Servile Education Association every year don't eat breakfast for the two days, so they do a lot of work and help us get the day off the job.
And thank you for breakfast. Food is always a great motivator.
You know, I'm sorry, and I know I'm on a time. In your folders, I just wanted to explain, I just put a couple of key materials in there for you to really, again, I wanted you to have a feel for what really goes on throughout the year with mentoring. However, this year, I received emails from new teachers complimenting, again, just the orientation and the information without it being overwhelming, so I actually put accolades in there for you to read, because it really, I think, does a nice job. And also, there are two emails from mentors, which I'm very proud that they show the enthusiasm that they have for the mentoring process and for, again, really helping the new teachers throughout the whole year. So please enjoy reading at your leisure. Thank you.
Thank you again, Shannon.
Thank you.
And as we discussed, professional development is a key area as we make our way to Vision 2030, and you can expect great discussions on how we can take the amazing program that Shannon and her colleagues have developed and make it flourish to something that we never even imagined we could make it. Now, the hard part after watching a presentation like that is asking someone else to come up and make a presentation too. So poor Dr. Shettyak. I'd like to ask Dr. Shettyak to come on up and to give a presentation on our Writer's Workshop curriculum initiative.
This spring and summer, the teachers and supervisors within the district embarked on a very large project of curriculum writing. And I'd say we probably have 40 to 50 different curriculum that is in different stages of being revised and new curriculum. And we've done it a little bit differently with this set of curriculum, and we are going to be asking the board to approve tonight the first set, and I think there are 16 separate curriculum that we're asking for approval on. Writer's Workshop, you might have heard about Writer's Workshop. It's something that we've talked about in the district for a number of years, and we've worked on it. Well, we are finally have the curriculum finished, and it's all part of our Vision 2030 of increasing student achievement and incorporating the Common Core State Standards. And with this curriculum, we are beginning with the end in mind. You may say, why begin with the end in mind? How's that different? Well, in the past, teachers used to plan forward, they would develop a lesson and develop learning objectives, then they would develop the assessment. And sometimes the assessment would measure what the teacher was focused on, and other times, it may not have. Well, research shows that student achievement is increased when teachers begin their planning by asking themselves, what should students learn and what should they be able to do? And what the desired results are. So you develop through this enduring understandings, essential questions, and summative assessments before you actually begin developing the objectives and the lessons. You do all this using the Common Core State Standards or the New Jersey Core Curriculum Standards. The objectives are then written, and the lessons are planned after the assessments have been developed. Now, the Writer's Workshop curriculum, grades K through 5, is really one of the highlights of what we've been working on this summer. And in the past, our writing instruction, it was a lot of direct instruction, where the teacher would teach a lesson, okay, today we're going to work on writing sentences with details, okay? And then they would have the students practice, and then the students, their finished piece might all be on the same topic, what did I do this summer? Then the students would be taught and expected to master the same skills regardless of what their writing level was or their writing ability. And there would be very limited, if any, differentiation between what one student learned to what the other student did. But the Writer's Workshop model of curriculum, it's really based on having the students work through their writing skills, much like a professional writer would do. It has them begin with studying and reading what we call mentor texts, for examples of a particular type of writing, whether it be a personal narrative or informational writing. And then the students would practice their writing, and they'll conference individually with their teachers and peers, and they're working maybe for 20, 30 minutes every day on doing their writing, but every student may be at a different point in their writing. And there's a lot of opportunities in this case for differentiation, and they can write on a topic of their own choosing. Now, keeping a notebook, a writer's notebook, is very, very important in this. Now, our Writer's Workshop, it's not something we just started. We've actually been working on this for quite a while because we wanted to get it right. In the 2012-13 school year, we began training the teachers in grades kindergarten through 5th grade on this model of writing instruction. In the summer of 2013, the language arts supervisor, principals, and elementary teachers attended a week-long training over the summer in Paramus. Then throughout last year, we had training, that ongoing training that was provided for all teachers in kindergarten through 5th grade. We also began training 6th and 7th grade language arts teachers, and this was spaced out throughout the school year. This past spring, we began to write the curriculum. Again, this summer, the elementary supervisor, elementary, middle school teachers, and some principals attended a week-long training. And throughout this time, the teachers who were working on the curriculum were sending different drafts of it to the teachers, so that they would get feedback from them. And now, we're going to continue this school year by providing more training for 6th and 7th grade teachers, and we will continue with some other forms of training for the K through 5 teachers. We're hoping next summer to do the 6th and 7th grade Writer's Workshop curriculum. Okay, and this is just some information about the research that supports the practices about beginning with the end in mind, and with Writer's Workshop, how writers need to work frequently and in many different genres to gain independent control, and how writing and reading is connected. Some topics, some unit topics, for example, they carry through year to year. In 2nd grade, unit topics include personal narrative, nonfiction experts, authors as mentors, persuasive opinions, and nonfiction research. Moving up to 3rd grade, they also include personal narratives, informational, opinion, realistic fiction. 4th grade, personal narratives again, realistic fiction, personal persuasive essays, informational essays, and literary essays. So as you can see, it's building the steps along the way, and the children are exposed to many, many different opportunities to do that kind of writing. Does anyone have any questions?
Board members with questions? Dr. Shettyak, one of the ones I had is, would a program as comprehensive as this, how do you assess its success? Because it's obviously not something that's delivered in a vacuum, so, and we're changing the game here in terms of how we approach this, how do you assess the success of a program like this a year, two, three years down the road?
Well, I mean, there's a number of different ways you can assess it. You can assess it through student writing portfolios, because we will look at how the students are progressing from year to year, throughout the year. We look at their writing portfolios. Because reading and writing are so connected, it would certainly be expected that the students' reading skills would improve. We're certainly looking for improvements in standardized test scores, and because of so much of what we're doing, both in the reading and the writing, is based on informational text, it would correspond to the science and social studies and the other subject areas, too.
Any other board members with questions? All right, Dr. Shettyak, thank you very much. And I love the begin with the end in mind, and when you think about Vision 2030, that's really what it's about, whether you're the, you know, that first grader who's going to be entering the workforce in 2030, or the high school freshman that's doing it in 2022. It's what are the expectations at that particular juncture that we need to prepare for.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shettyak. You know, I don't want to minimize this huge step we're taking with Writer's Workshop. It's not only a change in curriculum, it's a paradigm shift in instruction. More often than not, things like reading and writing were left for home. You know, you're going to write a report at home, not in the classroom. You're going to write a story at home, not in the classroom. We're flipping that. Writer's Workshop flips that. Our kids will write in school with their teachers. While they're writing, our teachers will be pulling them as groups or as individuals to work on enhancing their craft individually, to focus on isolated areas where the teacher, you know, is targeting to improve per child. That's the emphasis in Writer's Workshop, having the kids write in school. Reader's Workshop follows the same philosophy, and that's the next page that we'll be getting to as the year progresses, all of which, again, is part of our Vision 2030 plan. You know, at the beginning of the year, I had the opportunity to meet two pretty amazing individuals, incredible leaders, and I felt so blessed when I learned that they were both working within the same department. To have someone like Eric Glock-Malloy and Sandra Paul teamed up, you know, it's like having LeBron James teamed up with, who's he playing for, with Cleveland right now? I refer to them as team technology. So when we had a chance to meet and talk, we began to immediately discuss the fact that we have this incredible software called Parent Portal, and we don't nearly have enough parents utilizing it that we should be. So we talked about our goal for the year, being we want to try to get 100% of our parents signed up for Parent Portal and utilizing Parent Portal. The two of them looked at me and said, we'll get that done in two months, and you're going to find out real soon, that they came very, very close to that. I'd like to ask Sandra and Eric to come on up for their presentation.
About three years ago, that most of you that are sitting on the board, I presented the very first time with the Parent Portal to you and showed you how it looked and how it worked. If you look here, we've come quite a long way, and a huge chunk of that way in the last two months with the help of a strong technology team and Dr. Labby. Back in 2011-12, we began planning for the Parent Portal, initial presentation, started to get the word out there. In the second semester, we launched the Parent Portal, first in the upper grades and then in lower grades. By the end of that school year, we had 22% of the district enrolled. By the end of the following school year, we were up to 38%. By the end of this school year, 2014, we had 57% of the district enrolled. As of last Friday, we had 84% of the district enrolled after a long summer and a lot of efforts trying to get everyone involved in this paperless scheduling and eventually paperless grading process. If you look at the individual breakdown of the schools, you can see while the district's at 84%, some of our schools, particularly the high school and the middle school, are even higher, 87% and 89%, with most of the district schools in the high 70s or into the 80 percentile range. The high school and middle school have an additional benefit of numbers that aren't reflected on this chart, because for the first time, middle school and high school students are actually being given the opportunity to access the student portal, which is very similar to the Parent Portal, the difference being that they can use their school computer, Chromebook, email accounts to log into the portal to view their own schedules, their own grades, to keep themselves aware of what's going on with their schedule and their grading. Those numbers aren't reflected here, and these are just purely our parent numbers, but those would tie into even a greater buy-in to this software. During the course of this summer, we went about trying to get parents and students involved in a variety of different ways. As has been the case since the first day we launched, parent self-registration was still available using letters that had been sent home from the schools since the 2011-12 school year, and every year there since, back to school nights, conferences, I know here at the high school and down in the middle school, I had seen those tables out where people were handing out those letters. We also opened up an online registration via email, parents that were having problems with the access accounts or hadn't received them or had lost them, and as of last Friday, we had responded to about 1,050 emails just for online registration or reset password or other tech support, and those are still coming in. I know over the weekend, myself and several of the team members have been looking at these, and probably about another 100, 150 emails just since last Friday. Dr. Shettyak had sent out Blackboard Autocall. Dr. Shettyak had sent out blackboard auto calls, initially to all parents, and then as we got the numbers closer and closer to where we wanted to be, to the parents that still hadn't signed up. We did four in-person sessions, three of them at night here in the high school, one of them which many of you saw at the last board meeting, long lines in the parking lot, and one in the afternoon for parents that worked at night. During those first two sessions, we handled about 305 parents, and in the following week, most of which came on that Tuesday, handled about 794 parents. Student Portal accounts were activated for the middle and high school automatically, so as soon as the student accounts were activated, they could log in with their computer login information that most middle and high school students are aware of from year to year. If they weren't aware, they checked with their guidance counselors at their schools, and they were given that information. One thing that helped with this portal application a lot was the launch of the high school's web app, to which the Parent Portal is linked in a variety of different ways, and as of last Friday, 2,346 people had downloaded the high school app. As I said, more emails, requests for registrations, phone calls are coming in pretty much every day at this point. And we've caught up with our emails. I know there was a little delay for some parents that had been emailing on that heavy spike around August 26th. We are current, everyone is getting answered within the course of a workday at this point. To access the Parent Portal, you have the website, which we've had available since the first day. You now have the high school web app as well. And starting with the first day of school, Pearson, the company that makes Power School and the Parent Portal, is also going to provide an app for students and parents. So if you are logging in from the website on a mobile device, and it isn't as user-friendly as you would like, you can log into an Android or Apple-specific app as well. 99.9% of the information that's available on the website is also available on the apps. There are a few pieces of information which we didn't transfer over, including locker combinations, but you can always get that from the webpage itself. Throughout the course of this project, I'm standing up here speaking to you today, and I was here originally when we launched the portal, as was Sandy and Dr. Shettyak, who have all been with this process since the beginning. But there was a team that has spent countless days, nights, weekends, getting this project run for this summer and getting close to that 100% mark. And still, we're not at the first day of school yet, we're still going for that goal. Victoria Alexander, she's a middle school teacher and one of our Power School coordinators. Eileen G. Ivanko, who works at the SUES, also a new Power School coordinator this year. Drew, who jumped in that first night as a volunteer, and then came back for two more nights as a volunteer on his own time to help out. Mike Ranowitz, our network administrator, also came down for the third and fourth session on his own time, volunteered to help with the huge numbers. Sandy was there for every meeting. Karen Ranowitz, our student information systems manager, she was there every day, handled a huge percentage of the emails. I was there. Dr. Shettyak was there as well. Actually, on our last sign-up session, she grabbed the laptop, got right in there and helped sign up parents. And very importantly, all the support staff in all the buildings, the guidance counselors, the secretaries, because they were on the front lines. They were fielding the phone calls, they were getting the walk-ins, and they were telling everyone where they needed to go. So this was certainly a team approach with Dr. Labby's support. We are getting close to that 100% mark, and hopefully, by the first day of school, we will be there or very close to there. Thank you.
Board of Education members, any questions?
I have one. Can you tell Eric how many times a parent logged into the portal? Is there a way to do that?
Yes, we can do that.
So if somebody's shocked because a kid is fuming out or is not going to graduate, you can go there and say, well, he never logged on the portal.
We absolutely can. That information is not only available to the people administering the portal, but also to the principals, the guidance counselors, and to the teachers. So during a parent conference, a teacher can pull up that information as well through power teacher.
My only regret about this is that it wasn't there when my kids were... Great tool, it really is. Thanks.
You know, when I came to the district a couple of months ago, I had the opportunity to witness two of our board members say something to me that was very meaningful. First, Mr. Mackinon used the expression often, "Team Sayerville." And then Mrs. DePinto commonly uses the phrase, "Bomber Spirit." These three presentations truly demonstrate that Bomber Spirit and that Team Sayerville. Thank you guys very, very much.
I'd also like to thank the final team that presented with regard to the Parent Portal as well as the app. I was a little concerned about this, because given our low numbers of enrollment in the Parent Portal when we started this initiative, and the fact that we made a conscious decision not to issue paper schedules, and the fact that we were going to be migrating that many people over a very short time, I was very concerned about what the reaction would be. And I have to say that throughout this entire process, I only got one complaint. And when you think about the parents of 6,000 students, I actually got more complaints over open enrollment for health benefits than I did over the parents of 6,000 students transitioning to something like this. It really is a credit to Eric, to your team, to all the people who are up on that slide, the guidance counselors, the secretaries, because when people can't get the information that they want from it from technology, the first thing they do is get frustrated. And the first person who they can interact with, thanks a lot, and the first person who they interact with is going to feel all of that frustration unloaded on them. So on behalf of the Board of Education, we really appreciate your effort in making this a reality. And long-term, not only is it going to save us money, but parents will have, at the end of the day, a much better handle on how well their students are doing, because now they can see it real-time. They don't need to wait for a progress report or the end of the marking period. So thank you very much. Any other comments from any board members on the presentations?
Just great job.
Thank you very much. We'll move on with our agenda. No correspondence, no minutes. We'll move on to Dr. Labby with his superintendent's report overview.
Okay, on Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure, we have a contract with the Signal Electric Corporation for security upgrades. There's also our Teamsters contract, a contract with the Bush Law Group, LLC, the 2014-15 Special Education Extended School Year and regular school year tuition contracts. We have several more that we're asking you to approve prior to the beginning of the Student achievement, we have some new curriculum, as well as some revisions to existing curriculum. And we have the appointment... in each school. Vision 2030 Governance, during our last meeting, we asked the board to approve the first reading of the policies that are up on the slide for this meeting. We're asking you to approve them for a second reading. We also are asking you to approve the Board of Education and district goals that we presented to you during the last meeting. For Vision 2030 personnel, I would like to note to our Board of Education members that there are some changes, as well as members of our public, from the original agenda that was posted online on Friday. We did make changes to the agenda and posted them this afternoon, but on item number six, nine, 19, and item number 14 and 15, there were some corrections made, minor corrections to those. But we'll be asking you to approve our principal salaries, and with the earlier version, we mistakenly left Mr. Glock-Malloy off that, and he is on that now. There are some leases of absences that we'll ask you to approve. There are some non-certified appointments that we're asking you to approve. We have 11 new hires that we're asking you to approve as well. And we have our list of certified and non-certified substitutes for the 2014-15 school year. And finally, the superintendent's merit bonus goals are on there as well. Any questions? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Could you just tell us what the security upgrades are included in that contract? Do you know what?
Mr. DeAndrea?
Those are the upgrades that will occur at all of our elementary buildings. Basically, what you're looking at is new door openings and cameras throughout the district, four elementaries, Solover, and the upper elementary school.
And are we still getting those white cards? Is that done, or?
No, they're not. They will, I apologize. Certain doors will have the key act, the card reader access, yes.
Okay, and are those cards going to be, is that included in this contract?
I believe that's where they are, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Labby. We'll now go through each section. For simplicity, we're not going to be moving stuff around. We're just going to go through, discuss. If you've got any items you wanted to vote no on or abstain, or have any other issues with, please bring them up at this time, and then we'll take a final vote at the end after opening up the public. That should streamline things a bit. So, Mr. Balk, I'll turn it over to you. Is there any committee report from Finance and Infrastructure, and if you want to talk about any items on the agenda?
There is no committee report. I'm going to abstain on number five in Section A.
Okay.
And we have a stand on number, Section D, number 21, Balka and Cronowski, the two substitutes.
Which one? We're just doing Finance and Infrastructure.
Okay, just Finance, okay.
So five, number five, and that's it. And then we'll get the other ones in the next section. Also in this section, for the benefit of the public, you'll notice that we're hiring the Bush Law Group. The eagle has left the nest. Mr. Bush has decided to start his own law firm, along with two of his former colleagues, and he has approached the board about an interest in continuing our working relationship with him as our attorney under his new firm. As I understand it, tonight, Mr. Bush will be the seventh board to join your firm, assuming this is approved. So we will be retaining Mr. Bush, at least that's the intent if this motion goes through, except he'll be his own law group instead of with Schwartz, Simon, et cetera, et cetera. But we've been very pleased with his services, and we're looking to continue that relationship.
Can you make a comment on number 10? Mr. Mackinon? So I should make a comment on number 10, which is the contract with Teamsters Local 469. I want to just acknowledge the committee, which also consisted of Mrs. Batko and Mr. Brzinski. I think of all the negotiations I did, this is by far one of the more enjoyable ones. We lasted two meetings. The Teamster bargaining representatives conducted themselves very professionally, and I think that added to the speed in which we resolved this. As far as the changes in the contract, the majority, the bulk of the changes centered around the medical benefits, as that's always, that's kind of like a moving target. We settled on what the current medical benefits are right now, and I want to thank Mr. DeAndrea for being able to interpret that and to explain it so that everybody understands it and is agreeable to it. The meat of the contract basically consisted of the raises, which consist of 11% over the next three years up until 2017. And I just want to add that of this group of people, and these are our custodians, our maintenance workers that work inside and outside the building, this is a group of people I think that have the hardest job and probably the least desirable job in a school district, and that is cleaning up after 6,000 kids every day. I know some of us don't like doing it for two or three at home, but you can look at this building, you can look at the floor in this cafeteria, and you can see the type of job they do. So it was our pleasure to negotiate a fair contract with them, and I just wanted to make those come. So I recommend that the board approve that contract.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mackinon. Any other comments or questions on Finance and Infrastructure? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to, is it Governance? No, I'm sorry, Student Achievement, Vision 2030. Mrs. Bloom, your chair of Student Achievement, has the committee met, is there any report?
Yes, the committee met. Just a few additions to things that Dr. Zeitner already said. We did note that kindergarten enrollment was down. However, I've been informed that they keep coming every day, not only from kindergarten but other grade levels. We discussed the new curriculum, the excitement about the Writers Workshop, we talked about the core standards. There was a question about a database, you know, if one was being compiled, and we were informed that that is not occurring. We discussed the Parent Portal, that the scheduling would be up and running end of August, and that there would be progress reports but no paper after the second marking period. And we discussed professional development, which consists of the in-building-based development on the first day of school and the district-based on the second day of school.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like to commend the Student Achievement Committee on pushing the curriculum approval forward to this meeting. I think it is important that we get that approved and we get it in the teachers' hands officially prior to the start of school. And also, Dr. Shettyak, I know that meeting was a week ago. Do we have any updates on kindergarten enrollment? Are we, roughly, are we still 100 down, or is that gap closing?
The gap is closing. We are still down from last year, but they are registering students constantly. I mean, some of the schools registered, some of the elementaries, not just in kindergarten but in other grades, up to 15 students last week alone. I mean, it's...
Now, is this problematic for us, the late registrations? And if so, are we going to look at, I don't know, some type of campaign? I know with having the orientation now later, I think it deters people from registering earlier.
You know what? It is causing us problems. It's causing us problems as far as busing goes. It's just today, Mrs. Shedlock had to rearrange many of the buses, and because of enrollment spikes in particular neighborhoods, so she had to move bus stops around and so on. So it is causing a large problem. There was a parent last week who was at the Parent Portal registration, and he was talking to me, and he has other students in the district, and he starts asking me about registering his five-year-old for kindergarten. He hadn't done it yet. And I said, why haven't you done it? Well, he said, I was busy, and, you know. So, yeah, we are, it causes a lot of problems in as far as class size goes, in our, within our special education, if there's special education students with the allocation of paraprofessionals and so on. It's tough to do it at the last minute like this.
All right, so we're going to have to look at some type of informational campaign or drive or something in the spring this year.
Well, and if I might add, I mean, as you know, the district has made a nice step forward in using social media now. If you're not aware, we now have our Facebook page, it's Sayerville Public Schools. We also have our Twitter account, it's SayervilleK12. We're going to use that, those mediums, to push out information like this. We were advertising in the newspaper, but it's a lesson on what people are using now to stay informed. As Mr. Glock-Malloy noted with regard to the number of people that have signed up for the app, we are becoming a very mobile society, and people are using mobile-type mediums to get information. So we're going to start capitalizing on that with our Facebook account, as well as with our Twitter account.
And it might also be an opportunity, maybe through the InfoSnap program, which I know you're looking at, to do like a preregistration. I realize they probably still have to come in with all the proper paperwork, but at least if we know they're out there, you can start making phone calls and doing the follow-ups.
Yes, and getting people on the Parent Portal. InfoSnap is a portal-based system that works with Power School, in which, if all goes well, and we still have a couple of steps to take, if all goes well, not only will our parents find information that is up there right now that's in the portal, such as their child's schedule, their child's real-time grading, their child's bus information, all the bus information for our children is in the portal now. But if we go ahead and move forward with InfoSnap, all of our parents will no longer need those, fill out those packets and those yellow cards anymore at home. They'll just click on a link and be able to register their children through that link within the Parent Portal. The great thing about that for our parents is, all the data that we have right now in Power School will immediately populate in there, so all they have to do is correct any changes.
Any other comments on Student Achievement? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Item C, which is Governance. We've got in there the district goals, which the Board of Education discussed at the last meeting, as well as the policies for approval on second reading. There are no changes, and I will be asking the Policy Committee for availability next week to meet via WebEx to update our social media policies with regard to technology. And we also have a few other policies in the queue that need to be updated, so we'll see if we can meet next week. Any comments or discussion on Governance? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to Section E, which is, I'm sorry, Section D, Vision 2030 Personnel. Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, we had a brief meeting earlier. We talked about some of our new hires. We did have some late resignations, but I was assured that our administration was enthusiastic and very confident in our new candidates and about our new hires. So we're excited about the new staff members we added.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Also, for the benefit of the public, you'll see in the agenda on page 17, the superintendent's merit goals, which is incentive compensation will be based in under law. You should also know that although this is a very simplified version, there are also tiered increments below this. So when you look at a certain percentage increase of, for example, 3.3 or 2.5, it's rated based upon the level of achievement. So the max it would be is what's listed here, but if there is partial attainment or partial increases, there is a tiered approach to the incentive compensation, which will give the superintendent... the superintendent partial credit, if you'd like.
I would like.
I know you would like, yes. Are there any comments on the Personnel section? Mr. Balk, I think you had an item you needed to abstain on.
Number 21, page 18, and page 21, Balk and Krenowski, substitutes list.
So, you have 21, page 18, Cheryl Balk.
And page 21, Yvonne Krenowski.
Oh. Mrs. Krenowski.
21, the name again?
Krenowski.
Krenowski.
Yvonne.
Got it.
Any other comments on the Personnel?
Yeah, I have an abstention, too. Page 11, on the left-hand side, Martin Biancomano. And page 12, on the left-hand side, Stanley Grabowski.
Okay, I have the first one on page 11, the name?
Martin Biancomano.
First column, like 10 down.
On the left.
Biancomano, Martin?
I went in the wrong column. I apologize.
And page 12, Stanley Grabowski, also on the left side, out, middle down.
About halfway down.
I have a comment.
Mrs. Strapp.
I'm noticing here that on page 14, you have Alexa Babasiri as a tenure position, but she's also in the substitute. I guess she was a late hire, so I presume you need to take her off the substitute.
Take her off the substitute list?
Right.
In a sense, by default, she'll be taken off that because we're hiring her as a full-time employee.
Oh, okay.
She'll still be approved, we just won't use her in that capacity.
But thank you.
Any other comments, personnel? Yes?
I have a question. For Wilson School, there is a playground aide. Are we increasing the staff there? Is there an issue with the playground, or?
No.
No?
That's we, a normal hire for a playground aide.
Okay, so it's not a new position, then? It's just a replacement?
Correct.
Okay. And do you by any chance know, I mean, if you don't know it now, how many positions we have hired that were not budgeted for?
I'll have to get you that information. I mean, I could give you a ballpark figure, but I'd really like to give you the accurate numbers. I'd have to give you that later.
Okay, and anything else on the Personnel? All right, hearing none, that concludes the superintendent's report. At this time, I'll open it up to public on agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know.
Barbara Kilcom, Barbara Kilcom, 22 Schmidt Street. On page three, I noticed we're loaning out our school again to St. Peter's University. And in lieu of building fees, which doesn't go in sync with yours, Dr. Labby, which you're looking to increase revenue, but how many staff members do you know in the past have used this at a discounted rate? Do we know how many?
I'm not sure of the exact number. I mean, I can certainly look that up for you from last year, but I'm going to say at least 10 each semester, if I had to take a rough guess.
About 10. Because, I mean, in fact, of our new vision and trying to create revenue, it seems we're giving out our buildings or so for free, so just wondering if it's feasible to do this.
And see, this is one of those, too, where it's not only revenue-based because it's right here, so for those teachers who are, you know, who we want to attract to stay and remain with the district, it's local, it's convenient, so it's also a morale booster as well for our staff. So, there's a, like I said, there is the dollar and cents component, and there's also the human component with it.
I understand. And the other, my other question is, on the principal salaries, in the past, you used to give the current salary and then the new rate. I mean, I don't remember what it was, so I just wanted to know, I mean, for the public, what is the increase in the revenue, the percentages or whatever?
Was it 8% mid-year?
Pardon me?
8%.
That's not in one year.
No, 8% over three years.
Yes, it was in 8% over three years, first year being a three.
That was in the contract. Oh, I thought you were giving away the story, 8% raise. Well, Miss DeAndrea.
No, no, that's the entire contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rakuya.
Helen Bruno Rakuya, 18 Chelsea Court. First of all, I want to congratulate Mr. Glock Malloy and Ms. Paul for pushing forward with the parent portal. I know that we've been pushing for it for a few years and really glad to see that happening. For the app as well, and Facebook and Twitter, that we're finally catching up with what's going on. I have a question about the goals, though. Our goals, you have goals that there are an increase in student achievement, but what is the goal? What is the increase supposed to be? So, we have our superintendent being rewarded for achieving certain goals, so if he goes up half a percent, or if we as a district go up half a percent, is that really significant enough to say that we've achieved those goals? What are the numbers that should be with it?
Each one is quantified, so the numbers are all separate. I've got the listing here. I don't know, Dr. Labby, do you want to comment? I mean, I can show you the listing. We've got all the individual numbers. This is, you're just looking at the summarized version here.
What about like on page eight, where it talks about the increase, the percentage of students who achieve proficiency? Increase by what amount would be, would you consider being successful? 2% increase or a half a percent increase?
Three and five, I believe it's on that spreadsheet.
Yeah, for example, one of the goals, increased percentage of students who achieve proficiency on the 2014-15 Grade 11 Park Language Arts and Math. It's, any increase is worth .55%. 3% is worth 1.1%, and 5% or greater is worth 1.65%. So, it's all tiered.
So, that's for the superintendent, but what would you consider, because on page eight, it's as a district goal, what would you consider being a successful goal? Any increase?
They are the same. They're linked.
They're the same.
So, we're going to benchmark. It's not two separate standards.
Okay.
They're linked together.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll close public at this time, and I will take a motion to approve the superintendent's report in its entirety. By Mrs. DePinto, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Strapp. It'll be understood if you vote yes. Any exception? You had additional comment?
I just wanted to say that with my yes vote, I was happy to vote for the Bush Law Group as our, you know, Jonathan, if you don't know, has been our attorney here the past eight years, I would say. I think he's always given a sound eagle voice. I think, more importantly, understands the dynamics of the board and different personalities.
And he still comes back.
And he still comes back. And one thing I want to say on a serious note about Mr. Bush and observing him over the last eight years, and when I worked closely with him in a different capacity on the board, is that, how to use one adjective to describe him is being negative, that everything's provided us in the ways he's conducted himself. So, this is a good thing for the district, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Bush. Welcome back. All right, we'll move on to discussion items. Mrs. Batko, I think you had one as a follow-up from the last meeting.
Yes, I received a phone call from Tom Bishada asking if we would bring this up again because he couldn't make the meeting. He had come with us with the request if we would send a resolution to the town council, whatever the wording was, that he was objecting to their pilot program where they're not collecting school taxes on housing developments. And I think his rationality said to me, say, one thing he wanted to point out is if we do it here, if the council's going to do it here, what happens? Or maybe you could do it at the point, too, and then what happens? So, I think his point was to look for a start with the school board if they were interested in sending a resolution over to the council.
Okay, so your recommendation is to draft a resolution to note the board's objection to any type of payment in lieu of taxes or pilot program in the Borough Council?
Well, I think the focus really was more for housing pilot programs.
For housing, okay.
Pilot programs.
Okay, for housing pilot programs. Okay, so I have a, is that a motion?
Well, I mean, if it's open for discussion, I mean, I think he was looking, he had asked if we discussed it, but we haven't met since. He brought it up, so...
Okay, well, if you want to make a motion, we'll get a second and we'll have discussion.
I want to ask a question. You as a, as a prior councilwoman, how would that be perceived? I mean, we're just going to do some, we're, they already voted.
I know they already voted. It was just more of to express our opinion that we were not happy with the decision.
Mr. Seid, you don't need a roll call. You're in discussion. If there's a unanimous decision to move forward, we would ask our attorney to draft something, and that's when you would vote.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Well, I also expressed concern on this because from Mrs. Batko's statement was the fact that the Borough Secretary, Borough?
Business Administrator.
Was under the assumption that since he spoke to Omidio, that it was a board decision. And so, it's out there that the board had no issue with this when the board really knew nothing about it. That would be my concern, that if they're going to say that they spoke to someone on the board, it wasn't the board, it was the business administrator, and from what Mr. DeAndrea said, it wasn't even put to him in that way. It was, would you have a problem with 12 kids? Well, of course, 12 kids isn't a problem, but as we know from past, which I said in my email to him, we know that their figures are always askew, and you wind up with many more children, and then you have no tax money to pay for the education. So, I think the concern here is that they are presenting it that the board had no issue with this pilot program when the board really wasn't informed. So, I think we might want to consider that if we're going to draft something that in the future, if they have issues like this, that they would definitely make sure they contact the board as a board.
I agree.
Okay. Other discussion?
If I could, just for clarification, I did send to the board that when Mr. Franco refers to the board, he's not referring to the board members, he's really referring to the board that spoke to the Board of Education and the administrative team or things. He wasn't trying to segregate administration from the board. He was just making a statement, the board, not the Board of Education, board members.
But how do we feel as a board, letting this go the way it is?
Well, hang on, when you say letting this?
Well, without, without...
What's this?
Well, without letting our voices be heard.
But is this the pilot, or is this the 12?
No, the pilot.
The pilot, okay, so we're on the pilot.
Well, I'm against the pilot program because it's not, you know, it's not fair to everybody that's paying taxes. I think, I know why it was done in that area, I don't agree with it, and you mentioned the point, now you're talking about 2,000 residences, and I doubt very much if the Borough was willing to give up. See, the issue I have, and when we go back to the Borough Business Administrator, my, you know, I'm for the resolution, it's not going to do any harm. I know what it's going to do, they're going to look at it and distribute in their Friday package, and that's going to be it, okay? Because they already, they already made this decision, okay? If they decide to go to pilot program, which stands for payment of group taxes, then the Borough, nothing stops them from giving the Board of Education money, to say, "We have the pilot program, you're not getting this money, but we're going to give you this money based on the taxes they're collecting on the property and not necessarily the residents." So, that's what I would say, I would send the resolution, and I'd say, "Hey, by the way, this comes out to X number of dollars that you can transfer in our fund group." You know, I mean, that's, nothing prevents them from doing that.
Right, I, nothing does, and that was made clear at the meeting, but it also was sort of clear, we're not getting it. So, I think we can include that in the resolution, that we could ask for it. I think more of the point is that, the impression is that, I think it's nice that if our voice was heard, as Beth said, that I think we need to say something. I think our silence is more saying more...
Passive compliance.
Yeah, it is. I think our silence is more compliance, only because of the way it was done. So, and this way, if it does happen again, we would have it on record. But I think we should include to ask for the money. I think that's a great idea.
Right, we could ask for, if it's 20 students times $10,000, right? Because that's basically what it costs to educate a child, you know?
Well, I would ask based on the tuition. Well, I wouldn't ask on the tuition, I would just ask on the property tax rate, on whatever it should be, because you'll never know how many students will be there now.
Well, you know, they base this on a general, they call it plan of study, that says in like developments like this, Phil, this is how many students you generate. I know, being on the planning board, when this thing came, we made it very clear that we didn't want anything in that building or facility, like top lots or anything like that would be attractive to people who moved there with children. And the fact that they're one and two-bedroom, kind of, you know, it's better than three and four-bedroom homes. I remember when Town Lake was going up, and we actually...
Right, and that all changed.
Yeah, I know. And I know when Town Lake was going up, and I had extra questions, "How many kids you plan on generating?" They told me, "Hey, you know, people that are buying 5,000 or $1,000 homes, probably not going to send their kids to public schools," since I think we got pretty close to 200 kids coming out of that. And Town Lake is not finished being built yet either. So, you know, the 12 is just a number, and I know they factored into that the apartments, once the apartments get knocked down, those are kids that are there, but we're not assuming they leave town, just going to move, they're still in the school business, so you can't use that. So, the way they, you know, statistics are statistics, but I would support the resolution. I think Mr. Bush is chomping at the bit, I can see he's writing everything down on the new meeting. I support the resolution, and we put a little caveat, "Oh, yeah, by the way, you know, you can figure out how much tax dollars there was, and put it down in the draft." Now, I know, I feel bad about this because I believe you appointed me to be the Board of Ed Council Representative, and that I should go to the council meeting, and I think I failed miserably at this point.
Yeah, but this is the only time in about six years, so, this is the one issue that came up.
We could appoint Mrs. Kilcom.
We'll work with Mr. Bush to come up with a resolution.
Okay, first of all, the board should also know that this is not the first board that's discussed this. Going back to the days of Elaine Kubats and Barbara Anderson, the board is on record of being opposed to pilot arrangements, but again, I don't think it hurts to refresh it again. But again, my question for the board is, because I want to give clear direction, what exactly are we opposed to? Is it simply pilot for residential, or, and we're looking for, should they strike a pilot agreement that they should enter into negotiations with the school board for a portion of that funding?
Well said.
Very good.
Is that it?
And also that we need to, if they're saying that the board approves it, they need to make sure the board approves it. We were left out of the loop.
Well, they don't need board approval.
No, they don't need board approval.
I know, but they're putting it out there that the board was okay with it, and they never brought it to our attention. So, I think the board should be informed if they're going to say that the board approves it.
And I would suggest that we can probably accomplish that piece in the cover letter that goes along with the resolution, and just let them know that in the future, ensure that, you know, when you're talking to the board, that the board actually takes action to approve or deny something before they indicate that the board has approved or denied it. Okay?
Shall I go to the next council meeting?
You're always welcome to go to the next council meeting, or just call Mrs. Batko and get the minutes.
Well, actually, if we're done, there is one other thing, but since you weren't at the last meeting, we could discuss it. There was another topic brought up in relation to the school, and there was more bickering on this as well.
I think I heard about this one.
Okay, well, but let's, I think the whole board needs to know we should discuss it. And just to make a long story short, there was bickering back and forth on whether the school knew or whether the school didn't, and it's all over the contract for the Slover field. And if you remember, five years ago, we drew up that contract, and it has expired.
Yes, it has.
It has expired. There was a comment made, "Well, I've been talking with Mr. DeAndrea about this for months." Well, I talked to Mr. DeAndrea today, and went, but they went back and forth, and there were quotes made out of the contract, different quotes, I don't know if people up there had different copies of the contract, but maybe if you could forward us the, the last contract, I would like to know what it really says.
I have missed the Bush's firm reviewing it. The discrepancy came in a typo, one page out of 51-year contract.
Right, I don't think there was discrepancy of that, there was a lot of discrepancy on how long the contract was, whether it automatically rolled over, whether it didn't, whether it was one year, whether it was four years. But it was another thing, well, the school board hasn't discussed it yet, I don't know where it's going to be discussed, but I think whoever the committee is that's doing the Slover school, I think.
That would be finance and infrastructure, and I agree.
I think they need to sit down and discuss whether, if they want to renew it, how long they want to renew it, what the plans offer the school before the Borough Council votes on that contract.
Yes, and Mr. Frankel and I spoke about it, I sent him a draft copy, I happened to find out about it through the grapevine, I guess is the best way, and I said, Dan, why is this on your agenda for tonight? I says, my board hasn't even seen it yet. He goes, it's just on for discussion. I said, but make it clear, there is no approval because it's still being reviewed by my attorney before it goes to them. And he, he took the draft that I sent him and passed it to the board.
First, I remember this contract, what was the main justic of deal? They paying us a certain amount of money?
No.
No, no, there was no money.
It was a five-year, five-year contract, one year renewals for five years.
Maybe we should include in there the amount that we're losing in the pilot program. That would get the message better in the resolution.
I think it's going to hurt.
I think we had the portion we have to be careful about with fields, is they'll start charging us for the use of the field that we use on their behalf.
Any other comments? But no, the, the board will have final authority over that contract before it's signed, I will not sign anything.
No, I, I know that, but once again, there was a comment made, well, we've been talking to, I've been talking to Mr. DeAndrea for months about this already, and then someone has.
Mr. DeAndrea, if I were you, I wouldn't answer your phone.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's starting to become.
Why doesn't a council president just call the board president? And that's the way negotiations should be, if there's going to be something on their agenda that, you know, maybe you need to reach out to.
Mary?
And figure something out, because, you know, they're elected officials, we're elected officials, that's the way it should be working, not, you know, an appointed person calling another appointed person, and then, you know, because I listened, watched the tape, and what the VA said for the town, and it did imply that, you know, that you had given the blessing, so I think that needs to be done, is just let them know that, hey, you know, yeah, they should call us.
I can do that.
That's the best way to go.
Well, they did eventually, after a long time arguing, they, they did table it, but it was a, I think, a close vote. I think it was a tie vote, actually.
Well, even if, I mean, in theory, even if they approved it, it's still not a contract until we approve it.
No, I, I understand that, but it just seems like the process isn't working, that's all. I mean, I understand it wouldn't have worked.
Process opportunity here.
Yes, there's a process problem here.
Yes. So, Mr. DeAndrea, if you get any more phone calls from the Borough regarding anything that you think may come up at a public meeting, just shoot me an email for starters, let's, let's see if we can close that gap.
Or send it, or send it to Mike, too.
There you go.
And send it to Mike so he can go to the meeting.
I'll take care of it.
I did ask him not to, but.
Okay, are there any other discussion items? Okay, hearing none, we'll open it back up to public for any item on the agenda. Actually, any item concerning the district.
Barbara Kil Cummins, 22 Schmidt Street. I attend all the meetings, as you know, many planning board meetings, Board of Education meetings, council meetings, and when this pilot came up, it really got under my dandra. First of all, you said, Mr. McEnone, that Mr. Kane gives you the percentages of how many students that they anticipate. Well, I recall, maybe almost 30 years ago, when we closed four schools here, when we were building townhouses and Main Street townhouses and all, and Dr. Parnell said, oh, don't worry, there's not going to be any children, it's really going to be a bedroom community, young couples and all. And God rest her soul, Eileen Butler says, does she know that everybody's on birth control or whatever, not going to produce any children?
I remember that comment, actually.
And you can't, right? You remember that?
I remember that.
And it's true, we closed four schools and probably some that we shouldn't have, and especially Washington School, they gave it to the seniors for a dollar. And I have a history in this community of knowing of what transpires, and it really gets under my skin with this pilot program. You said, well, the council can give us money, the council has no money to give you. They never even anticipated and put in their budget for the problems of Weber Avenue and MacArthur Avenue, how are they going to maintain it, either with outside services or whatever, to even cut the grass or, so the money isn't really there. And to give away the store in a pilot program was wrong, definitely, definitely wrong. And what I'm worried about, are they going to set a precedent, like she said, about the point, 2,000 homes there? What's going to prohibit them from putting, giving it to the point or anyone else? Now, I understand we need ratables in this community, and we need the money in this town for the taxes, but to give away the store? And what really irritated me, our assemblyman, John Wischneski, to me, I thought was totally unethical, he represented the developer against the people that he represents. Now, something's wrong with this whole picture. And so it really bothers me, and I think the Board of Education should make a statement against this pilot program, even if it is too late, it's a shame you didn't know, Mr. DeAndrea, or rather, DeAndrea knew, but Mr. Labby, Dr. Labby didn't know, the board didn't know? That's wrong. So, I mean, we do not elect the secretaries, be it the business administrator for the council or the business administrator for the town, to represent us and have a voice for us. So this Board of Education should take a stand. They could always rescind it, they could, and I think if the outcry of the public, and they are now noticing, and they are talking about it, but it's wrong, and they're not thinking of the children, oh, it's for the kids, for the kids. I don't care if it's 10, I don't care if it's 12 kids, it's besides the point. Why should all the other, I pay my taxes, I have no children or grandchildren in this school system, but they're going to come away scot-free?
And I think it's for 25 years, too.
Twenty, exactly. Mr. Wischneski said that we're going to get $2 million in 25 years, I'm not going to live 25 years, and we're, the town's going to get $2 million? When? No. And that doesn't cover it, the cost, the garbage pickup, all the services that they receive. And I remember when they put in O'Brien Code Generation, we were supposed to get free electric, does anybody remember that? And we were supposed to get power. Red Oak, they were supposed to provide computers for the schools, did we get it? No. And I mean, these are ratables, they're industrial ratables, we don't have to educate them or pay for them. So I advise you to really take a stand on this and request them to rescind it, and it is important, because you're setting a precedent, if they do this for maybe 100, how many apartments in Club A, what's going to prevent them from doing it further in others? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kil Cummins. Anyone else for public? Mrs. Rakuya? You guys are going one for one here.
I have two quick questions. Mr. DeAndrea, do we, how are things going with the payment, the online payment for the lunches?
Mr. DeAndrea?
Last year, we did have a number of people sign up, I do not have a status for this year, but I do know that my school box sent in several boxes of promotional material that we will be distributing at back-to-school night and having in schools.
But are people signed up for it, are people using it?
Oh, yes, they absolutely are.
I have one other question, how are the, oh, do we have anyone in charter school?
Do we have anyone in charters?
Are we paying for anyone in, to go to a charter school?
Yes.
Yes.
We did last year, or?
I think we've had for a couple of years now, three, four years.
We've had for several years. We now have, used to be Greater Brunswick, now there are two others, so we have them in three different schools.
Three altogether?
Yeah.
And?
Well, three different schools, I don't, I don't recall the number of students.
And Field Hockey Car Wash is this Saturday, nine to one, September ninth, September 6th, please come out and support Field Hockey Team.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public?
My name is Alexis Dale, 2948 Washington Road. I have a question about our schools. This has been known on the, a lot of years, we've been getting this, there is no bus route at all.
Correct.
To go online to get the bus route, it's 35 pages, which I think is totally unfair for, for grandmas to have to do, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, I can use a computer, they'll get me wrong, but it's unfair to have to figure out everything. How much would it cost to put the route right in, the routes in here, to make it a lot easier?
We did just make that change, how much did we save in, in doing that? And it's, it's not only the, the costing piece, it's also how quickly we can get it to the printer, because the routes, depending on enrollment, do shift, so we have to wait a little.
Kevin, I know.
But I, I, I believe, Mrs. Dale was a, well, actually, she was my bus driver.
I'm a retired bus driver, terrible.
But the public may not know that piece.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, even if there's changes, it's just the idea of making it easier for all of us.
Dr. Sheryak?
There was little to no reduction in cost for eliminating those pages. The reason for eliminating them was the fact that we had to wait until a certain date, until Mrs. Shedlock had all the routes pretty much firmed up, and that caused us, if you remember last year, the, it took a very long time turnaround time from the printer, the year before there was an issue, so the decision was made, because what was holding it up, being sent to the printer was waiting for the bus route. So the decision was made last year not to include the bus routes.
Okay, I have one other question. On the back is calendar, and has anybody proofread this? Because it says here, we're going to, we have a lot of snow days, one of the makeup days is May 25th, that's Memorial Day.
And, and that is by design legally to leave all of our options open?
But, but the, there's nothing here for May 22nd, that's the Friday before that they have off.
That, because that day was one of the additional days that was built into the calendar, so I think after the second snow day or third snow day, that day will have already been taken.
Okay.
So that was the logic, it was if we get to May 25th, we probably would have had 25 snow days by that point, because the way this community feels about Memorial Day, there's a very high possibility we're not going to school on Memorial Day.
Thank you.
It says May 22nd on the first line.
Thank you very much.
It says May 22nd on the first line.
Yeah, because that's, that's the original dates that go.
Built in climate weather, yeah, that's one of the first dates stated.
And I think even up until like today or yesterday, they're still, Mrs. Shedlock